We'll ask that members rise if you are willing and able for the invocation delivered by Reverend Jeff Isaacs, virtually, and also immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for your service, everyone. Let's pray together. Father, we come today. Thank you for this day that you have given us. Lord, I thank you for the able-bodied men and women that you have given leadership abilities for this community. And Father, I pray you be with them now. Give them wisdom that only comes from you. Father, help them to govern in a way that honors everyone, Father, in a way that honors you. Lord, we pray wisdom upon this meeting. Pray that you be glorified by the outcome. We thank you for your love, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on April thirteenth, 2021.
Does every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion about the minutes? If there is no discussion about the minutes, then I will make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and executed by Councilmember Fry. If no discussion, a motion, clerk will open the rolls, and members cast the vote. Result of six yays to zero nays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Proclamation, National Crime Victims Week.
Do we have members of the public who are here to accept the proclamation for the National Crime Victims Week? Sharon here. Excellent. Well, please feel free to come forward. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, founded in 1870. Whereas being a victim of a crime and navigating the criminal justice system can be a frightening and confusing experience. Whereas improving the treatment of criminal, of crime victims has been made through the efforts of thousands of victims and survivors who have turned their own experiences into a force for positive change, ensuring that others can receive justice, meaningful assistance, and compassionate treatment before the law. Whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the rights to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet the needs, rebuild their trust in the criminal justice and social service systems. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crime. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April eighteenth through the twenty-fourth as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Madam Clerk?
Randy Mulliken, homeless campsites and accumulation of trash along the Arkansas River.
Now open up to our public agenda. When you approach, please state your name and address if you are willing, and you will have five minutes. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Randy Mulliken. I live at thirteen oh two North Menissa, here in Wichita. To begin, I would like to say that I think I do represent kind of the average citizen, the average homeowner that lives here in Wichita. You know, I look for government to be responsive, to act on the needs as they arise, and to fulfill the duties that they've been assigned to. So this morning, I'm here to address what I believe has been an insufficient response by the city to homeless campsites that have appeared along the Arkansas River from Central to Thirteenth Street North. My home is in Indian Hills, which is adjacent to the West River Bank, just south of Thirteenth. Over the last three years, there's been a steady increase in the number of these homeless camps that appear along the river. One of the reasons I think this is happening is because there's a lot of trees, a lot of foliage. It provides some kind of concealment for these camps. Quite honestly, it's also located near the downtown core area, which contributes to that. Correspondingly, there's been an increase in the amount of household garbage that appears along the riverbank as a result of these campsites. I believe that this stems from, excuse me, homeless people foraging through local residential trashcans, looking for food. And, you know, people that pack their bag, or trash up in bags, they carry all of it down there and then go through it. I believe the increase in this garbage and campfires that occur from time to time are a public safety in themselves. I have communicated my concerns on a few occasions to Councilmember Claypool and to Chief Ramsey. To date, I really don't think that there's been a organized or long-term solution to deal with this particular issue. I do recognize that homelessness has greatly expanded from my own experience years ago as a police officer for this city. I think to combat this issue, I believe the city must undertake steps to provide reasonable access to lodging for food for those that are unable to provide for themselves. This is strictly not an enforcement issue. Pushing these people around is not going to solve the problem. I realize there may be some instances where people are not going to participate in some of the programs that have been put in place, but the reality is it's not an answer, and there needs to be more done for the homeless. Consequently, I also believe that the city must ensure that homeowners living in the core and near-core area have a quality of life equal to those living out in the suburbs. I think this requires that the city is going to need to provide ongoing oversight and enforcement to this area to eliminate the campsites and deal with the refuse that's been left behind. I will end by saying that these are the everyday responsibility, not sexy issues that you'd like to deal with, maybe, you know, big buildings, new developments, those kinds of things. But they do come with the positions that you hold, and I believe that your collective attention is going to be required to deal with this particular matter. So I do appreciate the time to be here this morning and to share this with you. I look forward to seeing some additional effort and trying to deal with this particular situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Michael McCorkle, creation of the Wichita Sustainability Board.
Welcome, sir.
Good morning. In an early Earth Day 2021 greeting to the Wichita City Council and to everyone. I am Michael McCorkle. I currently reside in District Five. Wichita is my hometown. Mayor Whipple, City Councilmen and Women, and all who are concerned about the future of our city. I speak to you again today on behalf of myself, my children, your children, and their children. Our planet is facing a global climate change emergency which has not received enough attention in our local media. We are at a time in history where everyone with any insight of the climate crisis that threatens our daily lives, our future prosperity, and the next generation's future must speak out. I am no expert, but I care about the future for all children and future generations. For too long, our government leaders have failed the people who elected them when it comes to addressing this existential crisis threatening everyone's future, especially those that will be alive after 2050. I have visited and lived in other parts of the world and seen cities like Beijing choked with industrial pollution and dying coral reefs in Madagascar. Climate change is real. And once unbelievable extreme weather predictions of future climate change, more forest fires, severe droughts and floods, and more intense hurricanes here in the U.S. have become common events already. Here in Wichita, we have seen our traditional weather patterns change. Wichita no longer seems to get spring tornadoes or much snow in winter, but we have snow today. Most people see how global climate change is changing the natural balance of our planet. The chorus of voices raising the alarm of global climate change is growing in number and volume every day. From Greta Thunberg to Bill Gates to President Biden, the list continues. People everywhere should add their names to the historical record calling for action on this life-threatening issue. I ask you, our elected leaders, to stand on the right side of history, to use the power and authority of your offices to take immediate action to protect Wichita's prosperity for future generations. I urge all citizens who share my concern to contact their city representatives about the immediate need for the city to address climate change by developing a sustainability plan, now, not later. One month ago, at the March sixteenth City Council meeting, we urged the City Council to address this critical issue, to release for public review any ongoing sustainability study efforts. From the city manager's inconsistent answers and post-meeting reports of urgent communication with WSU's Environmental Finance Center, it does not seem that much progress has been made on this critical issue up to now. Last week, others also asked the City Council to take action on climate change. We will continue to address this issue because you are failing us by not acknowledging the dire consequences of not taking action to protect Wichita's prosperity. The most important action every city must do to begin addressing its impact on the natural environment is to develop an environmental sustainability plan. Many cities in the U.S. have already done the work, so it is not necessary to reinvent the wheel. According to the 2017 book, The Sustainable City by Steve Cohen, cities have responsibility for a remarkable amount of policymaking that affects sustainability, and energy is central to sustainability. I urge this City Council to commit to set up an independent sustainability board to oversee a comprehensive sustainability study as the first step of developing a sustainability plan for Wichita, which will be an important tool for managing the city's future. Mayor Whipple, I commend you for all you have done during this pandemic to save lives in our community. I urge you to apply the same common sense approach to Wichita's future. Thank you for the opportunity to address the City Council on this important issue.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Tuttle?
Mr. Leighton, could you maybe, I know the speaker mentioned that on the March sixteenth meeting you gave an update on the sustainability plan, but just so the speakers are aware, I appreciate you being here today, and also the community, could you maybe just give another update of where we are with that? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We have, we conducted, we've been part of two studies, or I should say evaluations, of our environmental work to date. And we receive those scorecards from national groups and recognize that we have a lot of work to do in order to improve our score and to address issues of sustainability, environmental as well as on other issues as well. And we have, as a result of that, have contracted with WSU to give us a series of recommendations on how to address the issues that came out of those surveys and out of the scoring systems that they used. And that work is to be completed, I believe, by the first quarter of next year. So it's fairly extensive in terms of what they'll be doing for us. And we'll, I'm glad to share the scope of that contract with anyone that wants it, and I've already had some people ask for that, so.
Thank you.
Off the top of your head, you don't know which national groups are doing the scoring, do you? It just seems that represents a subjective standard that I think adds credibility to, you know, what I think we are trying to achieve. If not, we can talk later about it. But is there, just so the speaker and the folks here who are watching know, is there a national standard or a group that we're basing this off of that comes to mind?
Mayor, there is. Just give me a second, all right? The first group we've been dealing with in terms of our evaluation is the American Council for an Energy-Efficient Economy, and it's their Clean Cities Scorecard. And then we've also been working with a group, acronym is CDP. And I apologize, I don't have the full title for that group. And so, again, we've taken the scorecards from both of those groups and shared them with Wichita State University's Environmental Finance Center. They're the group that has put together a scope of work for us, and that's who we're working with now. I will note that we're not sitting on our hands. You know, a good example is this council approved an energy agreement with Evergy earlier that now has us purchasing seventy-five percent of our electric power from sustainable or from wind energy. And that's just one step.
Councilmember Sorrelli?
And like, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Leighton said, we, last week, we just approved phasing out twenty-four gas-powered buses, I believe, and converting them to electric buses, so I don't feel we're doing nothing. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Cristobal Patino, homeless and public transit.
Mr. Patino, present? If not, we will move on to the next person on this. Madam Clerk?
Tremaine Longer, city meters accepting all forms of currency.
Sir, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name's Tremaine Longer. I live at a friend's house, and I don't want to let his address out. But, so yeah, good morning, City Council. I'll be starting this meeting with an "I love you, Wichita City Council." I love you because I have our best, good character in mind. I'm following you within our Father, to later be asked by donations from the city. So, "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And don't let us fall into temptation, and deliver us from evil; for thine is kingdom, the power, and the glory is yours now and forever." City Council, Mayor Whipple, I'm asking not only for the city meters to be accepting all forms of currency to be updated. I just came back from Washington, D.C., and out there, you can pretty much pay with any, any kind of currency you have. And I've noticed here it's rather limited, and a lot of the meters need fixed. They don't work. My next subject is, I was asking for building space and donations and time allotment for a Christian group, the Wichita City Christian Group, that we're trying to start. We plan on doing exercises and city cleanup activities. We need space for weightlifting and cardio. We will be asking to do clerical activities like diet scheduling, exercise programming, and city cleanup. We do spiritual Christian prayer programming and exercises as well. One time, our volunteer unit, our group, went to the jail, and when I put my hand on the fingerprint machine to identify myself to let me into the jail, we had messed it up so much godly volunteer power that all the power in the jail had actually shut off for like three seconds. So, I'm very proud of our group because at that point it was considered an exorcism. Thankfully, the lights came back on showing us God's true character and His love and justice and strength in law. Besides doing in-house exercises and clerical scheduling, we will also be doing trash pickup. I had heard a gentleman talk earlier about some of the problems. So we plan on doing a lot of that. We'll need funding to help go through the city and pick up trash. At one point, in just one little area, since I moved back from Washington, D.C. three months ago, I picked up three thousand four hundred just cigarette butts in one little patch of grass and half a block. It's pretty bad if you go around the parks and stuff. You'll see broken bottles, trash, needles, syringes, drug paraphernalia, everywhere. It's terrible. We want to hold weekly award ceremonies where we can award people for their good awards, like honor roll students, trophy winners, just all-around people that do good deeds. So our Christian group wants to help, you know, justify those people for doing those. A special thank you, for example, Norma Longer, she is my grandma. A special thank you to her. She gave me a very special apology for feeding me the apple tree of knowledge orchard when I was an infant, not knowing I was allergic to apples, and kind of like Adam and Eve. It is very heavenly to have a grandma that loves me so much and cares so much for me to do such a Christian thing. Her and her other friends, like Natalie Neville, she was my first girlfriend when I was growing up. You know, to those people, well done. Thank you. I believe it is acts like these that brings my wife and I and others, wives and husbands and families closer together, establishing true devout love in God's purest form. It is very important to have church and government not be separated. With your donations, Mayor Whipple, we will be able to further prove our allegiance to our United States flag of America, Lady Justice, and all the good law-abiding people, presidents, and royalties of the world, such as President Biden, Prince Philip, Queen Elizabeth, and Jesus Christ. Royal Highnesses, Prince William and Kate Middleton. We will also be having adult leisure time, where we share in drinks and food, barbecues, alcohol, stuff like that, drawings and raffles for people. We want to do clothing lines and fine linens to help promote our businesses, to give our, to give us new clothes of righteousness. When it becomes legal, we want to do other things, like the governor, I heard her talk about legalizing marijuana and stuff. So maybe have smokeouts or whatever with some coffee. We'll be needing donations for that, too. We're asking for security, time, buildings, products, money, people, and good word of mouth. Most of all, new volunteers and members to help us to form the Wichita Christian City Group, to do the cleanups and things like that. I know the city doesn't have a lot of money, so it's up to the people to get together and clean it up if we want a nice, clean area for our kids to play in and stuff. So if you need help, do you need help? Help us. And that's our way out. My name's Trey Longer. You can reach me at programusalaw@gmail.com. Or my phone number is three one six three seven four nine five seven five, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your work in cleaning up the city and picking up the cigarette butts. That's a, it's a huge help for all of us, so thank you.
Great. Hey, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Consent agenda items one through ten.
Does every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? If so, is there any discussion on it, or anything we would like to highlight, or anything we'd like to poll? If there is none, then I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda as it's presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and executed by the Vice Mayor. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast the vote. Result of seven yays to zero nays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Reported board of bids and contracts dated April nineteenth, 2021, and Wichita Airport Authority Board of Bids dated April nineteenth, 2021.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Hana Lane Department of Finance, here to present the April nineteenth Board of Bids. Engineering bid we have is water distribution system tied for Firefly Way, second edition. Mice construction for Groups One, Two, and Three for a bid total of five hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty cents. North Industrial Corridor well survey, Marystone survey for fifty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. Batteries, automotive, and commercial, Pourman Auto Supply, sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. James Tabara Airport taxi lane A three extension deferred to May third, two thousand twenty-one Board of Bids. This is the purchase and procurement website, as well as our current open request for proposals. That is the Board of Bids recommendations. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions on the item? Input from the public on the item? There is no questions. There is no input. If there is no discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and executed by the Vice Mayor. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast the vote. Result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Petitions for public improvement.
Morning and welcome.
Morning. Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The item before you is the approval of petitions for public improvements. The signatures on all the petitions represent a hundred percent of the improvement district, and all petitions are valid per Kansas statute. On February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, the City Council approved petitions for water and paving improvements to serve Pike Second Edition, which is west of Hundred Fifty First Street West and north of Maple. The developer has since submitted revised petitions to increase the budget to meet current market condition, market conditions for both water improvements and paving improvements for Phase One. Staff recommend City Council approve the revised petitions and budgets, adopt the pending resolution, authorize necessary signatures. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Are there questions for staff? See, no questions. Is there input from the public? See, none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there discussion on this item? No discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the revised petitions and budgets, adopt the pending resolutions, and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast the vote. Result of seven yays to zero nays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Public hearing and request for letter of intent for multifamily housing revenue bonds, Wichita Rad Senior LP.
Good morning, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Tim Goodpasture with the City's Office of Economic Development for the record. The item before you today is a request for a letter of intent to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds for Wichita Rad Senior LP. Wichita Rad Senior LP is a recently formed partnership between the city's Housing Authority and KBK Enterprises. The intent is to rehabilitate twenty-five duplexes as well as two hundred and twenty-six units of low-income senior housing in two towers in the city of Wichita. The Wichita Rad Senior is requesting a letter of intent to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed seventeen million, three hundred thousand dollars. The public housing properties that would be rehabilitated as part of this project include Greenway Manor at three fifteen North Riverview, which is near Second and Waco, McLean Manor at twenty-six, twenty-seven West Ninth Street, which is near Ninth and McLean, just west of the river, Rosa Grag at five twenty West Twenty-Fifth Street North, which is near Twenty-Fifth Street North and Waco, and Bernice Hutcherson, which is at twenty twenty North Wellington Place, which is near Twenty-First Street North and Waco. Due to federal funds that have been declining in terms of investment in public housing, the units have deteriorated and are in need of rehabilitation. The Federal Rental Demonstration Assistance Program, or RAD program, allows public housing agencies to convert units from the public housing program to project-based Section Eight contracts. Public housing administrations are not allowed to take on debt. This conversion to Section Eight contracts allows them to partner with private developers, which allows for private financing to rehabilitate public housing. The city will enter into a ninety-nine-year lease with a limited partnership with Wichita Rad Senior LP. The Housing Authority will be a fifty-one percent partner in the general... The Housing Authority will be a 51% partner in the general partnership with KBK Enterprises, which was selected as the private developer partner in 2018. The city will retain ownership of all of the units, which allows for the property tax abatement or ad valorem abatement to remain in place, which makes the units more affordable. KBK Enterprises has closed on over $1 billion worth of real estate investments since it was founded in 2004. Keith B. Key, the principal, grew up in public housing and has an appreciation for public housing. They currently have offices in Ohio and Pennsylvania. These are some images of some of the properties that will be rehabilitated. Wichita Rad Senior has applied for 4% low-income housing tax credits through the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation through the state, which requires the use of bonds for tax-exempt bond financing. The bonds will be used for a sales tax exemption on construction materials for rehabilitation of the property and to achieve the tax-exempt financing. No property tax abatement is being requested since the properties are owned by the city and already exempt. The total investment in the project will be approximately $33.5 million. Some of the improvements that will be included in this project include replacement of all exterior doors, windows as needed, replacing HVAC systems, electrical systems, installing new kitchens, plumbing, and fixtures, as well as other additional investments. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. Sally Stang, who is the Director of Housing and Community Services, is here and can answer questions relative to the project, and I would be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Bluebog.
Thanks, Mayor. Help me better understand how this works. It's a private development company that's partnering with the city, is that correct?
That is correct.
But the property taxes on all these properties will remain off the tax rolls?
They will. The city will retain ownership, which will allow them to remain off of the tax rolls.
Do we have an estimate of what that amount would be in property taxes per year?
Do not.
Is there, could we get that?
It would probably be contrived number because these have never been on the tax rolls, these properties. They've always been public housing.
That's exactly what I was going to say. See, Sally's saying Housing and Community Services, the properties have never been on the tax rolls. They're subject to a payment in lieu of taxes equivalent to what they call the shelter rent, which is 10% of what the residents pay for their portion of the rent, less any utilities expenses. And that amount per a cooperation agreement is what's paid to the county in lieu of taxes.
Is this something we've done in the past where we've had a private developer come in there and benefit from it without paying the property taxes?
No, not here, not related to public housing. But yes, there are other low-income housing projects that can apply for tax exemption based on the nature of providing affordable housing.
But historically, this is the first one we've done?
With property owned by the Housing Authority, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Quick questions. I know this is a project we've been working on for several years, it seems like, and there's been a lot of hurdles that we've had to clear and get really creative, so I appreciate all the staff dedication on this because we know our public housing stock has needed this for some time. So kind of give me an idea of the timeline. What happens next? When do we start construction? When can we see these finished projects?
Absolutely. Right now, we're tentative close date of July 26th, so we have to get the bond issuance, the bond proceeds, the tax credits, the 221D4 loan, plus all the soft financing together. So I can tell you, I've had more calls with attorneys in the last couple of months than I've had in my whole life. So at this point, we're looking to close late July. At that time, construction will start on Rosa Greg and Bernice Hutcherson and the vacant units that are there. Those properties will be rehabbed in three phases and only require the residents to move just once from a non-rehabbed unit into a fully rehabbed unit at the site where they're located now. Shortly after close, we'll start relocating residents in the tower at McLean Manor to Greenway Manor. We have enough vacant units in Greenway due to the delays in the program to move the McLean residents into Greenway. Construction will begin on McLean Manor, and it'll take about 10 months, and all of those residents will be housed at Greenway. Once those units, the rehab is complete, we'll move the McLean Manor residents back to McLean and offer any existing remaining Greenway Manor residents, if they'd like to permanently transfer from Greenway to either the Rosa Greg or Bernice Hutcherson Garden Apartments or to McLean. At their discretion, they can do that. Or we'll temporarily relocate them into private units in the community while the construction of Greenway Manor happens, which will also take approximately 10 months. So we're looking at any 23 before all units are completed.
Thank you.
So I have a follow-up. I understand this proposal started, I think, in 2018, so some of these questions might have been answered during that time. But a 99-year lease to a company in Ohio that has offices in Ohio and also in Pennsylvania, my concern is, do they have an office here?
They do not have an office here. And the 99-year ground lease is actually with the limited partnership for which the Housing Authority is the 51% member. The partnership agreement, so there's a partnership with KBK for the general partnership, and then there's a limited partnership, which the general partnership is a member and the investor partner is a member. And what's written into that partnership agreement is after the 15-year compliance period, the Housing Authority will have the option to retain, to get the properties back, the improvements, because that's exactly what we're financing. We still own, under the ground lease, the land and the buildings, but we're financing those improvements, can come back to us at a dollar over any debt that remains on the property at that time.
So if, I'm sure there is, but maybe you can help me better understand, what if the improvements aren't up to standard? There's not, who would the tenants complain to or bring up these concerns to? If there's no office here, are we at the city the ones who would take those concerns and then relay it to this company in which they would now make improvements or investments?
Well, they won't be operating the properties once the construction is complete. They'll actually pull out of the general partnership after stabilization, and the city will be ultimately responsible. But we are required, or we're required, to conduct an RFP to select a management company. The city has no experience in managing tax credit properties, and per the tax credit regulations and the investors' requirements, the management agent actually has to have five years' experience managing tax credit properties. We conducted that RFP and selected Menonide Housing, one of our nonprofit housing partners in the community, will be doing the day-to-day management of the properties.
Mayor, if I can, just a reminder, we're the, again, as Sally said, we're the majority partner. So we won't sign off on the improvements until they meet our standards and meet standards imposed by HUD.
Okay. Glad you heard that. Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Sally, I just wanted to say thank you. I know this has been a long process, and we had a different housing director when it started, so I just appreciate you and your team, you know, getting everything, all the i's dotted and t's crossed and getting us to this point. I'm looking forward to seeing the renovated housing structures. We have toured those before construction, so I see the need and just looking forward to that getting done, so I just appreciate your work.
Thank you.
I guess my last question is, I think that all four of these apartments are relatively located in the same area. Are there other towers throughout the city that we own that would fall under this program eventually or?
The only remaining properties that we own under public housing are all single-family homes, and there are 352 of them. We are working vigorously with HUD for a repositioning strategy, and at this point are looking to work with our agency, nonprofit, and for-profit developers to submit a Section 18 application for demolition and disposition of properties as appropriate in hopes to do replacement housing in the future, so one-for-one. So we'll be able to hopefully dispose of an existing unit to a partner who's willing to keep it affordable housing. We'll get a tenant protection voucher for that unit, which is another unit of affordable housing, and then can do one-for-one replacement in the future. So this is just a strategy to take one affordable unit and hopefully turn it into three.
Thank you. No further questions, staff? Is there any public input? See, none discussion will come back to the bench. If there's no further discussion, then I will recognize Councilmember Claycomb as this falls within District 6.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to just echo Vice Mayor Johnson's comments that these are, I have toured these also, and these are much needed, these improvements are, so thank you. And I know it has been a very long process, so I move to accept staff recommendation and close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk roll open her roll. Members cast the vote. Result of seven yays to zero nays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Rennick and Rennick Second Edition Developers Agreement.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers Gary Jansen, again, Public Works Engineering. The item before you this morning is a request for approval of the Developers Agreement for Rennick and Rennick Second Edition. On April 6, 2021, the City Council approved the infrastructure improvement petitions for Rennick and Rennick Second Editions, a residential development located on the northwest corner of 45th Street North and Hoover. The developer's requesting a privately contract for design and construction of the public improvement serving Phase 1 of this addition and have the city finance through special assessments. Several years ago, the development community approached us and asked for if we would consider looking at an alternate bid process that might provide some more flexibility. What they were hoping for, as much as anything, was to be able to work directly with the contractor and the consultant and their builders all at the same time, under their direction and under their control. So the agreement you see before you today was approved, was, we worked through WABA. It was vetted with the development community several years ago. Obviously, we had our law department heavily involved. We have used this agreement so far twice on two commercial developments. This would be the first residential development pending your approval today. The developer will select and be responsible then for the design consultant and the contractor, but city staff will still complete project oversight and inspection as these will ultimately be city-owned and maintained assets. Included within the Developers Agreement is specific information related to design consultant and selection of a contractor. So the selection of the design consultant is up to the developer. Typically, they end up selecting the plating consultant, which per administrative regulation is typically what happens on all new developments, and that's what's happening here. Our staff ultimately has approval of the plans, so we're not so as much concerned on how that selection goes with the design consultant. However, in working through this again, especially with our legal counsel, and trying to make sure that we still protect our interests and those of the contractors and ultimately the developer, because when the petitions effectively are revised, most petitions say that the city will construct improvements. What these petitions say is that the city will acquire improvements. That was the main thing that had to change on the petitions. We still have to make sure, again, these are city-owned and maintained assets, and we've got to make sure everything is done right. So what we put in the agreement specifically for bid requirements is that the developer shall maintain a minimum of three competitive bids from contractors for each of the improvements to be installed. The developer agrees to establish a time and date for opening sealed bids with city staff present, which is similar to what we do now. And then we have several conditions, actually three, within the Developers Agreement that they have, it allows them the right to select a responsible contractor and provide justification of selection in writing based on the following criteria to be approved by the city engineer's office. So the selection of the contractor shall be based on price, schedule, and past performance on similar projects. So a little bit different than what happens now with our competitive bid process, that we select the lowest responsible bidder. The developer here has the ability to not use just low price, but also looking at schedule and past performance. They have to provide it in writing to us for approval of the bid. So far, when we've done this, again, it's only been twice, I think it's worked really well. Couple of things, or one thing I wanted to mention to you real quick before I forget. One of the things we worked through with the first two developments is the fact that sales tax exemption is not in place for materials on these projects. We worked with the original developer and the state, and that sales tax exemption is only available for contracts with the city of Wichita. Since these contracts are not directly with the city, but they're with the developer, the sales tax exemption is not in place. That is included in the agreement. The development community has been made very aware of that, and this developer in particular knows that that is the case. The budgets that are set forth include additional funding above and beyond what was in original petitions. The cost difference between the two would be for the total reimbursement amount, including design review, engineering and inspection costs for city staff during construction and financing of the projects. So typically, most petitions, the amount that city council approves on the petition includes all of the above. These petitions include additional amounts. Again, the developer is responsible for the contractor and the consultant. They've got some soft costs added there for management of those contracts, and so it increases the amount, but the developer is obviously aware of that by signing the petition. Construction costs incurred by the developer for the improvements will be financed on an interim basis with temporary notes by the city, consistent with the typical process for petition subdivision projects. All costs that will be ultimately assessed to the development, these will be permanently financed, again, with special assessment bonds at the completion of the project. This is a good process. We thought it would work well as an alternative when we put this in place several years ago. We haven't seen a lot of requests for this or a lot of interest. I think for a variety of reasons, especially with what the market continues to do and what we see with the housing boom, there's a lot of interest in developers wanting to try to get things done maybe a little faster than we might be able to do, or they just want to try different phasing. So we're anxious to see how this goes, confident it can work as well as it did the first few times. So with that, staff recommends City Council approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, I appreciate the flexibility that we're giving with the criteria. Sometimes lowest price isn't always the best for business, especially as schedules end up costing with delays and so forth. Is this something that we could ever change as it relates to our bid packages and start looking at these type of alternatives for city projects, or do we always have to stay lowest bid?
So we have started, actually, we've made some changes recently within our projects, allowing some flexibility already. And what we did mostly was to look at the experience side. So we recently added some language, working with the law department. This has probably just been in the last several months, and it was a result of, we had numerous contractors that were bidding on projects that we had never seen on do any work for the city before. And that's fine. We want to promote people wanting to own and run their own business, but we have to be cautious, too, whether they've got the ability to build a project, because we were starting to have some issues, right? Even when you've got things like liquidated damages in place that cover our costs, if they go beyond allotted time, that doesn't do a lot to help the developer. We were starting to see some quality control issues. All projects are bonded, so the contractor's responsible to come back, but that also can have a pretty negative impact on the development at that point in time. So we do have some language in our bid documents now that allow us to vet out contractors based on initial experience, which helps. We, our goal is, long-term, is to look at more of a performance-based bidding so that we can reflect previous performance on projects within the bid, and I think we're getting closer to that. But we're off to a good start. This does allow a little bit more flexibility than what we have, but it's something we'll continue to look at.
Cool. Good to hear. Thank you.
Councilmember Bluebog.
Thank you, Mayor. And just trying to simplify this and understand it, basically, the developer's using his own money to do this rather than using the money out of the CIP. own money to do this rather than using the money out of the CIP, and then will reimburse it after the fact so that the city's not having to fund this, and we're not having to change around priorities? Is that?
All of this is special assessment funding and not through the CIP. So this is no different than any standard development, residential development, could be commercial too, anything that we special assess, this will still be special assessed. They have submitted petitions to cover the costs. The developer does have to fund the work upfront initially to pay the consultant, pay the contractor, but they will submit monthly invoices to us. We will pay them, and then ultimately, through bond sale, assess it to the development. So none of that part changes in how the project is financed.
But we generally have an allocation or an estimate of how much we spend on this each year, and this is a way for a developer to get their projects, rather than waiting in line for the infrastructure to get in there, they just pay for it themselves to get their priority moved up?
And actually, not. So again, and there's parts of that that get a little bit tricky related to whether we've got to extend water and sewer mains. That's the only part where people might have to wait. Otherwise, this is at the developer's will. When they're ready to go, and they've got petitions been approved by council, they submit a letter, or acquire a letter of credit, we get the project's bid, and they start construction. None of that changes. None of the priority, nowhere that they fall in order changes at all. This is just a different method for procuring the design consultant and the contractor. Otherwise, everything else stays the same.
So what's the benefit in this method, then? If it's not to get things done faster?
Well, what they want, as much as anything, because it still goes through the same process, and I can tell you for what it's worth, the first two times that we did this, the first time in particular, and in fact, if you go back in history before that, we had a developer that tried to do this, and they found out it was more cumbersome than they thought. We're pretty good at what we do. The city's got a good process in place. We can get through these projects pretty quick. And the first time the developer tried to do this, they realized it was a lot more than they wanted to take on, and we went back to the normal process of us bidding the projects. What we have been asked for from the development community, working closely through WABA for several years now, the developers themselves want to have the contractor working for them. They feel like it gives them the ability to schedule things maybe a little bit differently. They feel like that they can face things a little bit differently, working with their builders if they want to. I'm here to tell you that I'm not sure that it makes that big of a difference, but we wanted to provide that flexibility. They asked for an alternative way to approach these projects, and I think it makes sense to allow them to. We've only done this twice. Kind of anxious to see how this works on a residential development, because I don't know if it's going to benefit them a lot or not, but there really is no downside to allowing this process.
Okay. So it's more for a hands-on management versus some kind of financial?
Yes, sir. The financial part does not change, and in fact, the development will end up costing more, because they've got costs on their side to manage the contractor, to manage the consultant, and they've got temporary financing also, waiting for the city to pay them back. This is almost entirely driven by the developer's interest to control schedules and to work directly with the contractor.
So does the special assessment make the developer whole on everything, or do they have some management cost?
It makes them whole on everything. We went through that very carefully the first time we did this, and found a way through working with that developer and their general contractor and law in particular, including our outside bond counsel, to find a way that all those costs could fit and make them whole. So so far, we haven't seen, that I'm aware of, that the developers have been at any cost.
Okay. Thanks, Gary.
Further discussion? Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. So Gary, if I understand what you said, this is kind of a way for this developer to bid this on their own?
Correct.
Without the checks and balances of the city?
We have pretty much all the same checks and balances in place, what I explained, especially with the bidding process. The way they go about selecting the design consultant is effectively the same as we do now, because we allow them to select the plating engineer, and that part kind of takes care of itself. With what we have in the agreement, where they have to get three closed bids, we have to be at the bid opening. The contractor still has to be bonded, they still have to provide a two-year maintenance warranty. All of those things are the same. Contractor's just not working for us, they're working directly for the developer. But we've, I, we've put everything in place that we need to make sure we still get out of this what we need for public assets. So I think this is why it works good. It's been out there for a while. I would just tell you again, and I, I'm not sure that there's quite the benefit there that the developers thought there might be, but we don't see any harm in allowing them to do this either. And so this is the first residential development, it's the first time this particular developer has done this. So it'll be interesting to see how it goes. But yeah, I feel good that the time we spent with our legal counsel and outside bond counsel, that we've got all the checks and balances in place.
Okay. I was just concerned, I'm not the biggest fan of aspirational goals, but we have our aspirational goal of minority and women on business work and taking this outside of the city. I just had a question to, if that would still be aspirational on the side of the developer, or is that just going to be with the city? Because a lot of this work is proximate. Folks who work together, who've been doing that for years or decades, they reach out, hey, I've got this project, but when you have your women and minority on businesses that have not been proximate and have not had those opportunities, they probably won't be in on this process. So I was just wondering about that.
It's a, and I appreciate that perspective, and it's something we've discussed. It's still within the developer's best interest to not be making deals here, because they've got to ultimately be able to keep their total specials within a certain threshold. And so I don't think anybody's going to be trying to get too far past what's mostly the low bidder also. And so I think in that regards, what we have seen just so far is I think there is an interest in still working with some of the DBEs and minority businesses out there, because they can do good quality work for a lower price. We don't have a very specific requirement in there for that, but they're still going to want to look at doing that just to keep the cost down.
Okay.
Councilmember Sorella.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the city inspecting the final product of this infrastructure? And what happens in ten or twenty years if this infrastructure starts failing? Who's responsible?
So we still, within the agreement, that's one thing that we required upfront, is that the city, our field staff that oversees all of our construction projects will still be involved. We'll have an inspector on site and a project engineer. We will certify all the work that's being done, just like any other project, like we do now. As part of our requirements on every public infrastructure improvement project, contractor has to provide a two-year maintenance bond. And what that means is they've got to warranty all the work for defects in materials and workmanship for two years. That's been an established standard for a long time, and I think it works pretty well. Ten to twenty years from now, things will start to deteriorate, we may have to start maintaining things. But with the process we have in place for an inspector being on site, the specifications we have in place, that allows us the ability to make sure it is built per our standards, and that's something that's worked well for us for a long time. So that's the part we did not want to give up, and we will stay involved in that.
Further questions for staff? We'll open up to input from the public. There's no input from the public, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there any discussion on the item? There's no further discussion, then a chair will recognize Councilmember Claycomb as this falls into District Six.
Thank you. I move that we approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion is made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk Rollup and Roll, members cast the vote. With seven yeses, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Older Adult Home Modification Program Grant Application.
Good morning again, Mayor and Council. Sally Stang from the Housing and Community Services Department, for the record. Today I have for you the Older Adult Home Modification Program Grant Application. This is the first time we've actually seen this opportunity, and it comes to us from the Department of Housing and Urban Development's Office of Lead Hazard and Healthy Homes, and this falls under the Healthy Homes portion of that office. And they're seeking applications for comprehensive programs to make safety and functional home modifications and limited repairs to meet the needs of low-income elderly homeowners. Eligible applicants for the grant include nonprofit organizations, state and local government, and public housing authorities by name in the grant notice. The applications were due on May 4. We've just been notified of an extension. We always love when they postpone grant application deadlines, and it is now due May 18, 2021. And we, each applicant can apply for up to $1,250,000. So the goals of the program are to help elderly homeowners remain in their homes, not have to go into assisted living, by providing low-cost, low-barrier, high-impact home modifications that reduce the risk of falling and improve safety and accessibility, improve functional abilities, and have them age in place. The core concepts of this new program are that as people age, their needs change, and they may need adaptations to their physical environments in order to live safely. And for any intervention to have the highest impact, the individual's personal goals and needs must be a driver. And because of that, that's why the requirement to have an occupational therapist as part of the program. So examples of home modifications are grab bars, railings, lever handles, adaptive equipment, tower shoves, you know, transfer benches, handheld showerheads, raised toilet seats. These are really the lower-end modifications, not full bathroom rehabilitations with roll-in showers, et cetera. The grant has a $5,000 per project limit, and so it is, it precludes us from doing those higher-level activities. But we can leverage other funding and expertise. Just within our department, we feel we're really poised for this opportunity, because we've been doing the CDBG Home Improvement Program for decades, providing these type of repairs in low-income homeowners. We also have the Lead Hazard Control Program that's been going since 2019, and we've been managing public housing since the 1970s, including having to provide these types of modifications in our senior housing. So we actually have great depth of capacity in this arena. The contract with an occupational therapist requires a pre-assessment. The occupational therapist actually works with each individual homeowner to determine their needs. That occupational therapist works with the program manager to determine the scope, and then they're required to do a post-assessment to make sure that the modifications that were done meet the needs and make referrals to other additional services that might be available. The grant has no match requirements, so there's no impact to the general fund, and the grant application and agreement, if awarded, will be reviewed by the law department. So it is recommended that the council approve the submission of the Older Adult Home Modification Program application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and approve the necessary signatures if awarded. And I stand for any questions.
There are questions of staff. There's no questions. Is there input from the public? There's no input, we will bring discussion back to the bench. Is there discussion? Councilmember Tull.
I just want to applaud Sally again. I think every time you come, I'm more impressed. Having parents who are aging in place, this is something that's really near and dear to my heart. So thank you for being innovative and taking the time to apply. Just had a quick question. So will the grant, if we receive it, which I hope we will, hopeful, so the 1.25 million that will pay for the occupational therapist that we'll contract with for a three-year period?
Correct. It'll cover all costs of the program, including the program manager, which would be an in-house staff member, the occupational therapist, plus all the home modifications and adaptations.
And I don't want to get in the weeds, I'm more just curious, and we can chat more. So will residents in the community who feel like they're eligible for this, will there be an application process? Is it just first come, first served, and then when the money's gone, the program ends?
There will be an application process, but like all federal grants right now, we'll be required to provide preference to those living in an opportunity zone, which aligns with our goals and our area of investment that we've identified. So that's not really a problem, but yes, it will end up being first come, first served, unless, of course, one of the components is that we identify that there is a severe risk, and then we can prioritize one activity over another.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. Sally, do you know at this time, is there a cap on the home amount that they can receive for their modifications?
So we are limited to $5,000 for those repairs, but we can leverage other resources. So we've been having conversations with occupational therapists, of course, but Medicaid-eligible households, there's funding through Medicaid that could be used to expand on those repairs, as well as the VA. So we're having conversations with the VA related to older veterans. So we can leverage those other resources if the need is beyond what we can spend from this grant source.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's no more discussion, then I will make a motion to approve the, to approve staff's recommended action, which is to approve the Older Adult Home Modification Grant Application and approve the necessary signatures if that grant is awarded. Second.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk Rollup and Roll, members cast the vote. With seven yeses, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Airport Hotel LLC Concession and Lease Agreement, Wichita with Dwight D. Eisenhower National Airport.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Bradley Christopher, Assistant Director of Airports. To start with a little background on this, on this topic this morning, some council may remember some of this from a couple of years ago. In 2017, an unsolicited request for one of the developers, the Hampton Inn and Suites, was received to build and operate a new hotel north of the Hampton. In accordance with the right-of-first refusal provision contained in the lease agreement with the Doubletree Hotel, also airport tenant, notification of this development request was provided to Doubletree on September 6, 2017, and it was acknowledged by the Doubletree. The right-of-first refusal gave the Doubletree one year to respond and execute a lease if it chose to develop its own hotel. The Doubletree failed to exercise its right-of-first refusal within the one-year period. Consequently, the WAA was free to negotiate with any other party for hotel development. The staff negotiated a lease with the requesting developer and presented it to the Wichita Airport Authority Governing Board for approval in June and July 2019. At that time, the Doubletree objected to the competing hotel proposal, and the WAA tabled the action on the developer's proposal and lease agreement. In the summer and fall of 2019, negotiations were then initiated with the Doubletree to develop a new hotel. Doubletree, at that time, agreed to execute a lease agreement no later than April 30 of 2020, and to begin development thereafter. The Doubletree failed to sign a lease by that date, then asked for an extension until July 30 of 2020. Doubletree also failed to sign a lease by that date, and made no further attempts to communicate with airport staff thereafter. On January 4 of this year, a certified letter was sent to the Doubletree advising them of their multiple failures to enter a lease, had satisfied all of the right-of-first refusal terms under their agreement, and the WAA was free to move forward to any developer of its choice and under any terms and conditions. The Doubletree's designated local partner and lease negotiator acknowledged this notification and stated that they were no longer interested in developing a new hotel. Shows you a location of the proposed site, along South Ridge Road, just immediately north of the current Hampton Inn and Suites Hotel. The proposed developer, Airport Hotel LLC. The principal members of the LLC are Mitesh and Sumit Patel, they're also present today. Owners of the company have, excuse me, partners in the company Owners of the company have, excuse me, partners in the company have constructed, owned, or operated several hotel properties in the region, including the Hampton Inn and Suites at the hotel. This group was satisfactorily vetted through the city standard developer review process, and it's anticipated this hotel will start with 45 to 50 new employees once opened. A land lease must be executed before a franchise agreement will be issued by a hotel brand. The hotel flag has not yet been designated, but the intended category and by terms of the agreement be a select service hotel type of property, and it must be an upscale, high-quality, nationally-recognized brand under the agreement provisions. Next bullet provides some examples of what a select service type hotel and national brands would be, we'd find acceptable. Airport Hotel LLC will lease approximately 140,000 square feet of land on which to build a hotel of not less than 100 rooms. The minimum private investment will be 15 million for the construction and furnishing of the property, and that is by agreement. The lease term will commence on January 1, 2022. It'll be an initial 30-year term and two tenure options. Land rent for the first three years is at the rate of slightly more than 52 cents a square foot, or 73,668 per year revenue to the Airport Authority. Starting 2025, the land rent will be replaced with a concession fee of 1% of gross revenues, gross annual sales, or a minimum annual guarantee or MAG of 73,668, whichever is higher. The concession fee increases to 3.5% in 2049, 4.5% in '57, and 5.5 in 2062, if those option periods are exercised. No later than the lease commencement date of January 1, 2022, Airport Hotel LLC will deposit 2 million in an escrow account in favor of the Airport Authority to ensure timely construction of the hotel. These escrow funds will be released upon completion of the hotel roof. The Airport Hotel may choose to seek Airport Special Facility Revenue Bond financing. And I'll just add that those are included typically in all of our lease agreements as a potential option. It doesn't grant any rights or duties, but says they may request that. All facilities and improvements will be owned by the Airport Authority. There's no city funding capital outlay for this project. Following approval of the lease, application will be made to, and that application of lease would be upon execution. Following approval, application will be made to a hotel brand franchise, and architectural, engineering, design, FAA airspace review process, and construction permitting will begin. Construction is expected to begin in early 2022, if all permitting has been approved. Completion of the hotel and a certificate of occupancy should be received by June 1, 2023. The WA retains a sole right and discretion to extend construction start or certificate of occupancy issuance deadlines or to initiate an event of default. At April 5, 2021, meeting, the Wichita Airport Authority Board received this presentation and voted unanimous to recommend approval of the concession and lease agreement to the Wichita Airport Authority Board. Staff's recommendation is to approve the concession and lease agreement. And happy to take any questions you may have. I would also mention that Deputy City Attorney Jay Henkel is also present. If council has any legal questions or anything along those lines.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just two quick questions. I saw that it said the city had vetted this group and that they had done some work here in the region. Do you know any of those projects that they've worked on, and were they completed on time and working through the city deadlines?
On the, on previous projects?
Yes.
The vetting process that we obtained through the city process did not identify any problems, concerns, issues with those. Anything was raised in terms of anything that would be a red flag for us. Now, I can't speak to any delays or problematic issues with other projects. I will say that these partners were involved in also the Hampton Inn and Suites. We had no problems with any of that, and they've committed fully all their obligations. Rent has been on time, and never been any problems with that.
Councilmember Frye.
I thought you had two. Is that it?
I combined.
Okay. Thank you. Bradley, so appreciate the history. I know this has been a long project. I think all of us on the council received an email from the Doubletree Group questioning the lease terms that they were offered versus the lease terms that are being proposed today, specifically about the $2 million escrow and when it had to be deposited versus now. Is that a potential conflict?
Mayor, Councilmember Frye, I'd like Jay Henkel to address that issue. Thank you.
Members of council. Councilmember Frye, the $2 million, which is being requested as of the start of the year, whether that signing of the lease, is different in that respect, and there's a really good reason for that. This developer originally came to council with his proposal. He was ready at that time to put up the $2 million at that time, and that's what the agreement called for. He had his franchise, he had his flag, he had his engineering drawings done that met the requirements of that franchise opportunity. When he was told he could not go forward, and we went through a process of over a year delay, now nobody's willing to deal with him to issue a preliminary franchise. He needs to have enough time to be able to put together the franchise, then have engineering drawn to meet that requirement, and at that time, be able to go forward with construction. During the period of time between the signing of the lease and when that's going to start, he has no beneficial use of the property whatsoever. So he doesn't have, either his rent doesn't start, and his bond requirement doesn't start until that time. But once it does, he has a really short trigger. He has 30 days in which he must start to start construction, or he's in default of that aspect of the lease. And then I'd also like to say, that's a false issue. The right-of-first refusal in the contract with the Doubletree specifically says, as did their certified letter in January, that since they have not taken up the opportunity that was given to them on two different occasions by contract, and two different occasions by appearing before council, since they turned those down, there is no restriction, there is no limitation on how the airport is going to contract with a different developer. So the $2 million is different than the previous presentation? Absolutely. But so is also his commitment. He came to you originally with a $7 million commitment. It's now $15 million commitment of private investment. Those are two differences. There are others. But the airport's position is, those differences are immaterial.
Okay. Thank you. Second question, and I think Councilmember, Vice Mayor Johnson started this line, in terms of vetting this particular developer. If I read the documents correctly, these are the same partners that did Wichita Hilton Garden Inn Downtown. And I know we had challenges with those deliverables. In fact, I don't think it ever finished out the way it was originally proposed. And I've heard other talk, and I'm just concerned that, have we done proper vetting on this considering that history? And is it the same group or not?
It is essentially the same group, as I understand it. And all I can say on this point is, we went through the normal staff process, and that fact was expressly disclosed to them. So they knew they were dealing with the same people that had, that were, that had built, for example, the new hotel down on Douglas. And I'm not involved in that vetting process, nor the airport. And I think for a good reason, somebody else is involved in making those decisions. And the information is put forward to them, and they give the answers.
Right, but it's still city-owned property, whether it's Airport Authority or City of Wichita, so this will ultimately be our inventory.
Right. Councilmember Frye, the vetting process that we follow is, it looks at the financial capability of the company to perform on the current agreement, and it looks for tax delinquencies and other indications of either inability to perform financially. And we feel confident after a review of those documents that they do have the ability. No doubt that we experienced concerns and had some difficulties with the Hilton Garden Inn Downtown. That's well documented publicly. But there's nothing in our background check that would indicate they do not have the ability to perform on this project.
Okay. I haven't done more. I've done.
You've done. Oh, that. Councilmember Claycon.
Thank you. I have just a few questions. So I just want to make sure, was there a negotiation with the Doubletree? I mean, because they're saying that the terms are different. Was there a negotiation?
The question is, was there negotiation? I don't believe it ever even got migrated to that point, that there was actually negotiation. They, there were two. First of all, they missed the right-of-first refusal, first obligation. Secondly, there was discussion with the Doubletree Hotel. We'd established, I believe, the first target was by April to complete negotiations. If you remember, that was kind of during the startup of the COVID epidemic. So there was that first benchmark. They didn't accomplish that, and then there was the extension to July 1. Nothing really of any meaning was accomplished during that time primarily on their part.
Councilmember, if I could, I'd like Jay to supplement my comments here. There were numerous correspondence, there was numerous correspondence between the city and Doubletree, and in the correspondence, it was outlined what the terms would be for the agreement for them to move forward. And there was an indication at some point in the process that they were going to move in that direction. Jay, you may want to help.
Yes, thank you. The original contractual right-of-first refusal would have allowed the Doubletree to create their own contract, their development. They were not bound by what originally the first developer wanted to do. They let an entire year go past. They made no substantive contact for any kind of negotiated agreement. So then, the developer came forward with a specific proposal. The contractual right-of-first refusal at that point says, Doubletree still could have stepped in and taken that spot, stepped into the shoes of that developer if they were willing to accept that exact agreement. They chose not to do so. They said, "We need more time to do our own market study," as if they had not had that year in advance already. And they were given that opportunity. The only thing that happened after that, in the way of the negotiation, was negotiating for more time, not negotiating for any substantive agreement to be closed.
So when you say they were offered the same agreement, were they offered this, the timeframe of the $2 million? That's what they're contesting?
That wasn't an issue at that point.
Okay.
The $2 million changed now because they made their demands that altered the landscape for the current developer. He had that deal originally that would have been theirs. They chose not to take it up. And so the contractual right-of-refusal says, at that point, all negotiation terms are open. With this developer, or frankly, with any developer that would have come to the airport, they could have taken them up, and another right-of-first refusal would not have been triggered.
Okay. All right. Then my second question is, were these concerns raised by the Doubletree, were they raised with the Airport Advisory Board?
They made no appearance with the Airport Advisory Board.
They did not?
They did not.
Okay. And then, what are the ramifications of this group not meeting the terms of this agreement? What would hap, you know, because we have a history, we've talked about this a little bit, of not meeting performance goals. What would be the ramifications in this contract if they don't meet that, I think it's 2023, you know, where they have to have their hotel up and running?
Okay. Then we have these protections that we have in pretty much any standard build-out agreement with the airport. But I guess your point is maybe, what if they don't actually complete the construction? There's a bonding requirement that covers that. The bonding company would step in and make sure that the project got completed.
Okay.
My understanding is there's some money in escrow that you guys expand on, about $2 million in escrow. Is that germane, are the guys germane to the council person's question?
The $2 million escrow is in effect until a given point in the construction. It's held in escrow until the construction has literally risen to the point when there's a roof over the top of the construction. It's enclosed. And at that point, that $2 million becomes available to the builder to plow into further developments inside the property. So until the time the roof is on, that $2 million is an additional assurance of completion. After the roof is on, the building is up, and they're working essentially on the interior, then that $2 million goes away, assumedly applied to the project, but the bonding requirement still exists. And there's also a, in addition to the bonding requirement, we also require builder's risk insurance to cover any kind of loss to the property incorporated into the project and the labor that is used until actual final acceptance.
Councilmember Reed's up the floor.
Yeah, I understand. So just to understand the $2 million, if there were some default on this project, that money is retained by the city, or it goes back into the project, whoever picks it up to finish it?
The agreement doesn't really speak to that. The presumption is, it's going into the completion of the project. It's not listed as a liquidated damage. So a reasonable interpretation of the agreement would be, that's there to ensure completion of the project.
Okay. However, that's completed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The $2 million was definitely intended to act as a financial incentive to move through the project.
Councilmember Bluebuck.
Thank you much, Mayor. You know, I've kind of watched this over the last three years. It's been extension after extension, roadblock, and I've seen no action. The email you guys referencing, I did not get a copy of it. Did everyone here get a copy of it? Like, if someone could send that to me, because we've been discussing it, and I've had no knowledge of it. But I do know that the two developers that want to take action are here, and I'd love to hear from them.
Well, they didn't include you on it. Pardon me? They didn't include you on it.
Yes. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, City Council, Midtown Hotels.
Sum up, it's all nice to speak to you guys again. So lots came up about our reputation and kind of the completion of the Wichita Downtown Hotel LLC. We actually sold our stake in the hotel in November of 2019 before it was completed.
Actually, right before it completed. And as we were, as a sale of the hotel negotiation was, we were about 30 days to opening the pool. And what the new ownership wanted is the funding, what we budgeted, they wanted to say, give us that money, we will finish it. As we, we did not, they did not like our design. They wanted to change the design and redo and revamp the area of what we wanted to finish. So we funded that money to the new developer, the buyers, and let them finish the pool. So we opened the hotel in November of 2019. We sold it a few weeks before when we opened. So we had no part of the hotel finishing that part of the pool. We did open the hotel on, as we promised, in November.
And another stake in that claim is, we actually closed our construction company in 2019 as well. So we're going to be using three reputable Wichita-based builders for this project. We will not be constructing it. We won't be the general contractors. Any other questions? Councilmember Bluebott, floor.
No, I don't have any, but I guess the rest of the council would like to.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I think some of the concern, I know you mentioned November. Councilmember Fry, help me if I'm wrong, but I believe you came to the council in May of 19.
Correct.
Or maybe before that, asking for an extension, and it was before you mentioned anything about this occupier wanting to change the roof. So you were having delays then, and we provided an extension.
So I mean, the major delay in this project was that pool. I mean, a once-in-a-lifetime pool like that, that has a glass-bottomed pool, it's, there's only one developer for it, based out of North Carolina, and it was, that was the main issue in getting this project open. Hilton didn't want us to open the hotel until the roof of that building was complete, you know, for guest issues and guest noise complaints. So we went along with it. I mean, we wanted this pool for the city. I mean, it's sad that it didn't happen on the time like we wanted it to, but we did promise to deliver the product we wanted before that sale.
You did deliver, but I believe.
Pool's ready, it can be filled with water, but it's based on the new owner. We have no control over that.
But prior to you delivering, there, I believe there was also a financial penalty for being late with all the deadlines that we had. So my concern is, at the airport, where, you know, this is the entrance into Wichita, would this project happen on time? Now, I appreciate you saying you don't have your construction company anymore, but it's, will those deadlines be met as folks get off the plane and see, will this actually open on time, or will it be delayed again?
That is the reason we're putting all this money upfront, 2 million plus, we are giving bonding for 100% of the project. So there is a real bond's going to be there. So if something happens that somebody cannot finish, there is enough money and enough security there to finish the project.
And with the timeline outlined, 14-month construction starting at the beginning of year next year, that's very feasible with all the contractors we've spoken to. And like I said, the top three contractors we've spoken to are in the top five of the Wichita Business Journal. So they're all reputable names you guys know, and we're confident their ability to complete the project. Further questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Thank you. Do we have input from the public? Not much of a public, still here. We'll bring the discussion back to the bench, just to, I guess, have further discussion, of course. This is one of those issues where it seems like the majority of the council does have questions, and with that, could always entertain, most likely delay this item. So I just do want to remind the council of that. But if there is no further discussion or concerns, Councilmember Fry?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, believe that's a good suggestion. I would like us to delay this. I know next week is consent and workshop, so that would be difficult to delay to then. So our next meeting after that would be May 4. I'd like to make a motion that we delay decision on this until at least May 4 and bring it back for final consideration.
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded. This motion is to delay the item and place this item on the May 4 agenda and take up action then. Councilmember Tuttle is speaking to the motion.
I'm just curious, if we delay it, what are we hoping to learn, or what information do we need for the vote on May 4? I'm not opposed to delaying it. I think there's been some robust discussion, and that makes sense to me so that we can learn more. But I think that for us to be able to make a good decision, we should direct staff of what we need for the May 4 vote. Thank you.
Councilmember makes a good point. Is there anything we would like to direct staff as a body at this point to research or to possess with information, or are these more detailed concerns in which members privately take up those with the staff? Councilmember Fry?
I guess I don't know yet what I need to know. Just getting a little bit more comfort in the process. The fact that Councilmember Bluebott didn't have the emails until just now, I think that needs to be considered as well. I appreciate the partners coming forward and sharing their timelines, but I do know that that was a challenging project, and I think there were more than one delay. I want to confirm that as well. So again, just getting a little more comfort in knowing some of the facts.
Any other discussion on the motion? Again, this motion is to table the item until May 4, in which the item will be placed on a May 4 agenda and up for possible action then. So if there's no more discussion on the motion, then clerk will open a roll, and we will vote on that motion. The vote of seven yays, that motion does pass. This item will reappear on the May 4 agenda, in which allowing members' time to get updated information as they see fit. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
All right, rolling towards the end, however, we do have a blue sheet, so please don't let me forget that. We'll just ask, start off with appointments, other appointments by members, Councilmember Sorrello.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to appoint to the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Advisory Board, Dion Gates. And to the Cultural Funding Committee, I would like to appoint Dominic Gauna. That's all I have.
Other members have appointments at this time? I would like to appoint, I might mess up this last name, so I apologize ahead of time, Mr. Lee Schneider, to the Small Business Advisory Council to the mayor. Are there any other appointments at this time? If there's no appointments, I'll make the motion to accept the appointments.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk will roll and cast the vote.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I got you down for a yes?
Thank you. It's interesting, it shows it's all yes, but then it counts off by six, but this is reported, or recorded as seven yays to zero nays. That motion does pass. Back on announcements for the good of the body, Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. This is a little late, but if you had plants, you should have covered them because it's snowing today. And we didn't have a council meeting yesterday, but if you do have a garden, I know we planted some in our community garden, so hopefully those plants are still alive, but just pay attention to the weather. It's always risky to plant in April.
Other, other announcements for the good of the group? If there are no other announcements, then I will take this moment to move that the city council recess into executive session for 20 minutes to receive information on a potential site for a city facility pursuant to KSA 754319B2 for the preliminary discussions of the acquisition of real property. The executive session is required to protect the city's rights to the confidentiality of its negotiation, negotiating position and the public interest. Let's start that at, it's for 20 minutes, so let's start that in five minutes, which would be, that's my clock. Excuse me?
10:45.
10:45. Not sure if this, if I fully trust this watch. It should be 10:45. So in 10:45, we will meet in executive session for 20 minutes. Thank you. But then, of course, we'll meet back here to have a motion to adjourn the meeting. So this meeting extends until we meet back here.
Second. We have to vote.
Motion to go into executive session. Yes, sorry, that motion was made and seconded. Looking at legal, making sure I covered all my bases. Give me, Vice Mayor. With the result of seven yays to zero nays, we will be in executive session at 10:45. It is a motion, isn't it? It's not just an extension.